So would you mind just introducing yourself? And then I'll also introduce the president of the library here is Lynn Regiro. So thanks for coordinating this.
Hi, my name is Jesse Chance. I'm the new director of the Hyde Park Library. What else do you want to know?
Well, we're glad you're here and we hope that you can tell us a little bit about what your hopes are for the Hyde Park Library. What are the things that you intend to work on? And you know, what do you have suggestions for us and how we can be supportive of the library's mission?
Well, I hope to have a very successful library, of course. But I measure that by getting more diverse people through the door, more people period, and more diverse groups of people through the door. And just being connected with as many groups in the town as possible to try to make our library into a community center as libraries are meant to be.
So I know you did just recently apply for a grant from Dutchess County. And those are for youth oriented programs, I believe. So have you thought of what you'd like to do?
It is my hope that if I'm awarded that grant, if the library is awarded that grant, that I can make a maker space for teens to use. It would be for all walks of life in the library, but it will be focused on teens and primarily with a mind toward journalism. I'm going to, I would like to provide printing ability for like a newspaper, the ability to record a podcast or broadcast in cameras and some guidance.
Yeah, well, I know that you came from Newport's, the Elting Library, and it's another stone building. So I guess you have a propensity for stone libraries. All right, well, you know, we're right here and we'd love to work collaboratively with you on any of your projects. We're looking forward to putting an addition on Town Hall. We have the shared idea of bringing more people in, bringing more people into the town, bringing more people into the conversation about what government should be, what they want their town to be, because that's really how we create positive change. And you know, we're very blessed in Hyde Park with lots of volunteerism and it's kind of what makes our community tick. And I know Lynn is very active and her board and we appreciate that. And so let's, yeah, let's work together and all we, all we can do.
Yeah, if there's anything that we can do with the police department, we're more than willing to help as well. I spent six years of my time working at the school, so I'm very big about community oriented programs. So we're glad you guys are here. Anything that we can do, anything you feel we can do, your questions or whatever, please don't hesitate to reach out.
Yes, please.
The last time I was here, we were talking about the Turning Outward Program that we've started. And Jesse wasn't even hired by then when we started it, but that was when we invited the community to give input into what we would like to, what each person would like to see the town. And then we're going to help bring that out, we hope, by making the town as a library, like a major center of the town. So we have like the perfect person here with all his experience and all different levels in Elting for 17 years. He brings a whole vision and a range of expertise. And he's already shown us in what, three weeks or four weeks?
I'm done with a month as of around the 28th.
Well, it's incredible the amount he's done already in our library. So we hope to make the library really very exciting place. And with our renovations and new programming going on, we're headed towards our 100th anniversary. I know that the town is 200, but our 100th is in '27, I believe. And I think we're, I hope the town will get really involved and everybody will be really happy for what we have here in Hyde Park.
Jesse, can you explain if you're a new resident or if you're a teen or a young adult that it's the first time walking into the library, what do they need to, you know, get a book out of the library? I mean, is it, they walk in and what's the process?
Proof of residence is what we would like, but we're not going to send anybody out the door without a card if we can help it. I will, I'll bend them.
So they can walk in, get a card and then take a book out?
It should be a 10 minute transaction.
Gotcha.
You could do that online, too, right?
Yes, you can do it online.
They can do that online as well?
And actually, no, that's a good question. How can someone access the Mid Hudson Library System?
Go to our website, hydparcfreelibrary.org and there's a button right there.
And do you have on that website a list of the books that are available or periodicals?
Yes, in short, yes.
And how long does it usually take to get a book? Let's say, does it depend on the popularity or?
It depends on a variety of things where we're, we have more than 66 libraries in the Mid Hudson Library System. So it could be coming from three counties away and that'll take a few days. But most, most stuff comes through the Central Reference Library, which is Poughkeepsie. And we happen to be right next to that, so we can get things the next day.
Also, if they request a book that you don't have, you can get one through Mid Hudson?
Yes, and they pick it up right here at the Hyde Park Library?
Oh, that's fantastic.
That's a great service that I've used a lot. How many libraries in the system?
66 plus a couple of branches.
So all the books that they have are available to us?
Exactly.
Sometimes there's a wait, but you know, it's terrific.
Yeah, there's, there's an algorithm governing, making it so our patrons get our books first, but that's complicated.
And do you take donations of books?
We, in normal circumstances, yes, but during pandemics, we are, we have to, we are not right now.
Okay.
So what's one of the more popular reads right now? What are people reading right now?
I wish I knew that.
A benefit from the pandemic, if one can have such a thing, is we have a lot more online information, right? So you've got movies and lessons and languages and all kinds of things.
Oh, really? They can update, just go online to the website and they are able to access those?
With the Hyde Park Card, you can get access to streaming movies, to ebooks, to downloadable audio books, to classes. One thing I'm adding this year is called Creative Bug, so you can do crafting classes. And it's, it's all virtual.
They got the Larry David Show on, they sent, you know, I think Catskill had them. They came to Hyde Park. They didn't have to pay Prime Video the money they wanted. Never pay, we didn't get it for free.
What are the improvements that you're working on? You mentioned improvements, Lynn. Do you have, have you guys developed a plan yet?
Yes, actually. Well, first, for those who haven't been in the library since the pandemic, we redid the children's room. So we've redone the flooring and the walls and it just looks so much brighter and cleaner. You wouldn't have known the difference, but it's a huge difference. And now we're working and we're actively involved in a project that will start in October to redo the stacks area and the upstairs. So we're putting in natural lighting and countertops and nice seating, you know, comfortable seating for plug-ins for your laptops and things like that. So that should be a huge change. And then our big project is we'll have a capital campaign because we're putting in an elevator. And not only do we need an elevator for ADA approval, Franklin Roosevelt would have needed an elevator. So we're going to have an elevator in the library that is parented. So that, we're thinking that the capital campaign may be next year or so, I would imagine, maybe two years or three years out, but hopefully before our 100th anniversary, we're going to have an elevator. Pretty excited about that.
Fantastic.
Great, okay.
Thank you, very much for having me.
Yes, very pleased to have you and welcome. Look forward to working together.
If I could just, one last thing, I would like everybody to know, if you have any ideas about how you think we can improve Hyde Park Library, please call me, stop in, talk to me, I listen.
That's great to hear. Sounds like you're on your way. I think the improving the stacks is going to be immensely beneficial, especially to someone like me who's five foot tall. I don't know how I would get to the top, but yeah, that's.
Well, our tallest step will only be five feet tall.
Perfect, glad to hear that. All right, well, thanks again.
Thank you.
Jesse, congratulations, good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so Chief, would you like to join us around the table?
My hands are getting tired.
Okay. All right, again, you know, apologies that we had a snafu with our video, our videographer. And, but we do feel like it's an important discussion that we have tonight. And we're happy as always to have our Chief of Police here to provide his input. So I, we have some, just really some facts to relay to the public. The legalization of marijuana, that was a law that was passed in New York State through the Marijuana Regulation and Taxation Act. And so it's essentially legalized the possession and use of cannabis. However, the regulated retail sale of adult use cannabis is not expected to begin until late 2022 or early 2023. So it's, it's a complicated law and I've heard feedback that a lot of attorneys think it's poorly crafted.
It is complicated.
It is complicated. And we've been looking for a lot of input from various entities, including Association of Towns, a, other research organizations that have provided input. And Warren's done a fair amount of research himself, trying to get us organized on the, the law itself. So we'll kind of go back and forth, Warren. Do you want to take over?
Yeah, this is just to let the public know that we are going to be, the town is going to be publishing online and through the other methods that we have for communicating with the, with the, with the town. Some talking points regarding the, the act and just want to emphasize that the town, by whatever steps it's taking, is not going to be making a decision as to the criminal aspects. That's governed by state law. We have no authority over that regardless of what the town does. The, the use of cannabis within the limits of the town will be regulated by the criminal law that's basically decriminalized marijuana use. The options that the municipality will have would be to opt in, to, to allow the retail sales of cannabis and the lounges or similar to bars. And a decision, the town does have to make certain decisions on that before the end of this year. And the options, and we'll, we'll set, set it forth more clearly in what we're going to post online, would be to do nothing, in which case the town would be opting in to allow the retail sales and to allow the, the bars.
Consumption, the lounge consumption?
The lounges that are going to be analogous to liquor, a bar. And, or we can, we can opt out and, and not allow either within the municipality. That doesn't mean that the use of marijuana is going to be prohibited within the boundaries of the town that will be governed by the state law. And if we opt in and, and allow it, we cannot opt out at a later date, but we can opt out for either the retail sales or the lounges or both. And that is a decision that we have to make fairly soon because if we do opt out, that would be subject to a permissive referendum. That law has, has to be done by local law. So we'll be putting some material on, online for people to look at. We're anticipating at the next meeting, we'll, we'll be prepared to receive input from the community. And the public is going to be invited to weigh in. So the town board will be guided by what the citizens tree would like to see in the town. And then at the, I believe it will be the next meeting, we'll be ready to either go forward with one of the three options so that we can complete whatever we do by the end of the year. I don't know if you had anything?
So yeah, we were, we were, talked to the chief about it last week and kind of looked for your input as our barometer.
Yeah, well, we've had a lot of experience with this since 2020 because we started off 2020 dealing with the state bail reform, which is an absolute nightmare to decipher and sort through. And then the middle of dealing with that, we got hit with the COVID pandemic. And then during the middle of the COVID pandemic, we got hit with the bail reform and Executive Order 203. So for the last year, we've been pretty busy trying to bob and weave and comprehend things with, with very little guidance from the state. This legalization of cannabis is no different on our aspect of dealing with it and the criminal aspects of what's legal, what's not. We're learning day by day as we go and I've attended three trainings so far. And we have another one coming up through the State Chiefs Association to, to try to help us deal with it. The DEA's office has given us as much guidance as they can as they're sifting through it and sorting through it and, and creating case law to determine, you know, what's legal, what's not. You know, some of the concerns that we have locally is that you can right now smoke marijuana or cannabis in anywhere you can smoke a cigarette and use tobacco. So we're going to start getting those calls. I'm surprised we haven't had more of them as of yet of people standing outside of apartment buildings and, and smoking cannabis. So if you haven't smelled it before, it's a very foul odor and it's, it doesn't smell very good.
It smells like skunk.
So I don't want to, I don't want to hurt the feelings of any skunks, but you know, it's a.
Well, I mean, like you say, you know, walking in the city, you smell it. And my girls make fun of me because I'm like, oh, I smell a skunk, how can that be? Yeah.
Well, our concern is if someone starts smoking it in a restaurant or vaping it in a restaurant, you know, we don't have the authority to issue a summons for that. That's all done through the Board of Health, you know, and, and the committee that's going to be regulating all this hasn't even been formed yet in the state, but yet it's legal. So we're all, they're working backwards, in my opinion, you know, instead of setting guidelines and establishing the committee to be able to enforce different things as far, even if you want to grow your own plants, you have to have permission from a committee that's not formed yet.
And you know, to speak to that point, one thing that we are definitely going to do is pass a, a resolution prohibiting smoking on any public property, any of our town properties.
Which we have that for tobacco now.
Well, we have, we have, well, I don't know that we prohibit it in the parks. We prohibit it here, but hasn't been, I'd have to check, we did that early on, but with the law.
Yeah, I think smoking was what, 150 feet away from the building, so.
From the buildings, but I don't know if that's applicable to the parks. And so I have, part of what we would have to do is prohibit all smoking and vaping and that's our intent, but you know, we can, we'll have to take a look at that because that was like in 2012 and I can't quite remember if it was just town buildings or was it parks as well?
It might have been just town buildings because I think we just got done building the police court facility and then somebody threw a cigarette in the mulch and put the place on fire.
Yeah, I think it might be so, we're definitely, because that seems very inappropriate, you know, for families are out with their children in, in a park. They shouldn't have to be exposed to smoke like that. So that's one thing.
Yeah, well, we'll have time to, although we're kind of rushed to make the initial determination of opting in or opting out, if we opt out for one or the other of both, we can always opt in. If we opt in, we can opt out afterwards. So that's, that's why.
I hadn't done a lot of research on the distribution and the cultivating and selling of it, but we focused on in law enforcement is the lounges. So the way that we understand it and I understand is that you'll be able to have a lounge, just like you say, a, a bar that sells alcohol. People will be able to go inside, purchase cannabis, smoke it, eat it through edibles, however they're, they're consuming it, and then go out and get in their car and drive away in their car. So when someone does that from a bar and they're drinking alcohol, it's very easy for us to determine and easy for me to train my officers to be able to determine if someone's intoxicated. You know, people have been around, people since they were children, at family gatherings and family get togethers, you've seen people consume alcohol and become intoxicated. You've seen people consume alcohol and not become intoxicated. You know, so it's easy for us to test for intoxication as far as, as alcohol goes. So if you have a lounge where someone's going in and eating edibles, you're not going to smell the odor of the skunk odor on their clothing or on them. They're going to get in a car, they're going to drive down the road and have an auto accident. And then the only way to determine whether or not they're under the influence of any type of drug is to ask them if they were. And if they admit, then we have to take them down for a blood test to determine whether or not they were, had enough THC in their system to constitute a driving while ability impaired by drugs. But we don't have anything from the state telling us how much THC has to be in the system to determine that. So on the road, we use drug recognition experts, TREs they're called. And New York State is just like the rest of the country that we're very, very short on drug recognition experts because the training is so intense for, to, to be able to take a police officer and have them determine through their pupils and through different coordination tests to determine whether or not someone may be under the influence of some type of narcotic or drug. So the training is so long and expensive and to be recertified, you have to do a certain number of tests per year. So there's a huge shortage, especially in Dutchess County, of drug recognition experts because for me to be able to take an officer off the road for 12 weeks, send them to the training, and then they usually send them to jail or to a prison on people that are coming in and taking them and ask them if they would perform, let them perform these tests on them as a way of determining what type of drugs they may be on because many of the people that come into jail or prison are under the influence of some type of drug or narcotic. So this training is very, very extensive. We had two officers trained in it at one point and one left and went to the town of Poughkeepsie and then one let a certification expire because you have to have so many tests in, in a year to keep your certification. It's very hard to do that. And you have to have someone that can pass all phases of that training. So right now, if we need a drug recognition expert, we call Dutchess County 911. They put out a tone across all of Dutchess County, police agencies, asking if there's a available drug recognition expert to be able to respond to do that. And then when they do the test, it's a couple hour long test. So it's, you know, you're taking, you're paying the manpower for someone to go and do that. So the county's been reimbursing the drug recognition expert's salary at their current employer, you know, as a way of trying to entice more agencies to get involved, but the training's just not there yet. So that, that's my concern with the lounges.
Now, I'm sure, I mean, you've been doing this a long time and of course, you know, up to this point marijuana wasn't legal. So have you seen in your years of being on the road and, and working in the police department, a lot of recklessness and, and accidents when somebody smoked marijuana versus alcohol?
We're getting a lot of combinations, people with combinations of alcohol and marijuana. We have a lot of that with mixtures. Obviously from my time in the school, I looked at marijuana, you know, and I've had many lengthy discussions with, with people on this topic, but I feel marijuana is a gateway drug. A lot of people don't feel that way, but I, I feel many of the kids that I dealt with in the school started by smoking marijuana. They started smoking marijuana and then they, they transitioned into harder drugs after that and became addicted to, to harder drugs and led them on the life of, of abuse from, from drugs. So my personal experiences, again, I'm not a doctor, I'm not a psychologist, but from my personal experiences dealing with kids for six years, just kids for six years, that I consider it to be a gateway drug. And that's, that's part of my concern about legalizing it. But we also have people that are growing marijuana in their house. They're lacing it with fentanyl, they're lacing it with other drugs and kids are using this and, and dying. So is it better to have it regulated by the state, but is everyone going to go and buy it? If you can legally grow it in your house, are they going to go buy it where they're taxed 23% on the marijuana that they purchase? You know, so there's, there's so many avenues and so many what ifs with this because it's so new, it was thrown upon us all and we have to try to sort our way through and make the best educated decision that we can for, for all of it. And I, you know, I give you guys a lot of credit for doing as much research as, as you have on this topic. And no matter what you do, you're, there's going to be a population that's not happy.
So just to be clear, it's only 21 and up can purchase marijuana, right? And also to be clear, if the town opts out, it wouldn't prohibit people from Poughkeepsie. If Poughkeepsie opts in, they, they will, it still will be just as legal in Hyde Park to possess it as it is in Poughkeepsie. So really the things that we're regulating, because we have not a lot of choice, are just those two items, whether we will allow retail and lounges and.
Retail or lounges.
Retail and lounges or just retail or just lounges. Then, so those are the choices before us because the rest has been taken out of our hands. And it's also been taken out of our hands in terms of the growing, right? That's now.
Yeah, we don't have any jurisdiction over growing or distribution. That's all, that's the state law. What we will have jurisdiction over is to, to regulate those two uses through our zoning code. But again, that doesn't have to be done by the end of the year. We just have to make those initial decisions. So it'll, this will be laid out hopefully in a little, with a little bit more clarity on the talking points. And then the town board will make hopefully what seems to be an appropriate decision on this.
So if the town board in any town municipality, if they choose to do nothing, that's a action upon itself because then you're allowing, you're allowing both, right?
And you can't opt out at a, at a later date. Once you're opt in, you can't opt out.
So every town should be examining this because at least, as you say, no decision is actually.
Is a decision.
It's a decision, yeah. And so, you know, we've, we've really tried hard to figure it out, like this is put out by. Yeah, you know, a planner, environmental planner. And so just getting your mind around what limited controls you do have and how you would control them. Again, it's through our zoning in terms of where we would allow it to be located. If it's the growing of it, it's already under any agricultural use. But I do think that input I've received is that the licenses will be very carefully screened and monitored, that it's, as Warren said, it's similar to the alcoholic beverage control law and that the New York State will be administering the licenses. So.
They're also expensive.
And they're expensive, okay? So that's going to be a deterrent. And I think that, you know, that's somewhat reassuring that there will be a lot of control and hopefully research on those individuals that would be looking to open those establishments.
And I'm sure they're not going to cluster them all. I'm sure they're not going to spread them out.
That's true.
No, you're absolutely right. And so about a month ago or so, the mayor's and supervisor's executive committee met with the county executive and this was one of the topics he wanted to discuss. And I think his concern was that he wanted us to all inform him if the city of Poughkeepsie was going to be the only location that had it. He wanted to make sure that, you know, he had an understanding for the pervasity of, of locations. And so that's interesting in and of itself. But as I think you said, it's likely that they won't be clustered, that there will be a dispersment. And you know, part of the discussion is about the local sales tax revenue, that the cannabis sales will be subject to a 4% local sales tax, which will be distributed to the county where the sales take place. Counties are entitled to retain 25% of the local tax collected and must distribute the remaining 75% to the municipalities within the county in proportion to sales in each locale. So communities that don't have sales will not receive that, that tax revenue, which, you know, it's an interesting issue because as Rob just described, you may have somebody doing the, you know, smoking or taking edibles in another community and you'll still be impacted by that, but you won't receive any of the tax benefit. So I think it's complicated and I, you know, really just wanted the board to dig in a little bit, you know, get the input of the chief and the expertise of our town attorney here.
There's a lot, a lot to think about, you know, I, you know, I think a lot of us think of someone, you know, smoking marijuana or doing edible as a derelict or somebody hanging out at 142, right? You know, outside the doors and you've got the jocks on the inside and you've got all the, the heads outside 142, which is the cafeteria FDR. But you know, I think times have changed too, you know, there, there's a lot of professionals and so, you know, there's a lot to, to.
Yeah, I've had discussions and the feedback is interesting.
It's mixed, it's mixed.
It's very, very mixed, very mixed. Very mixed.
Well, it's just like alcohol, right?
Right.
Moderation, alcohol is fine, and some doctors say it's good for you, but it's, when it's abused is the problem.
That's right.
You know, and, and no matter what, it's here, so let's figure out a way to deal with it the best way we can and the best educated, make the educated decisions on it.
That's right.
Because, you know, we're gonna, people that are gonna be sitting in these chairs somewhere down the road are gonna have to be dealing with decisions that are made by all of us.
That's right.
That's right. Well, it has been a heck of a year for you, hasn't it? Between the police re-imagination and reform, I mean, it's been very intense. Bail reform, all during the COVID crisis.
We do it as a team, and, and you guys have been great, the board has been great and supportive of us and supporting of the officers, and, you know, we'll, we'll get through it like we always do, right?
Yeah, we work, we work through it.
Like what we're doing now with no video, and here's Neil.
And here's Neil.
His arms are tired.
For making it work, right?
Yeah, gotta be, gotta be nimble in this business.
So Warren, so Warren, what's the next step, the next meeting?
Yeah, we're gonna sense, I've already prepared a, a draft of talking points, we're gonna review it tomorrow internally, we may tweak it, we'll send it out. And then at the, the next meeting that we schedule this for, we'll be prepared to take whatever course of action the town board
So just so I'm clear, we really have three options. We, you know, we do nothing.
Correct.
Or
We do nothing and we are opted in.
Right, we do nothing, so we're opted in for everything. The second option is that we can opt-in and out, so we can opt-in for the dispensary, but out for the lounge.
Correct.
Or
Vice versa.
Or vice versa, right, or vice versa.
Vice versa.
So
But what we can't opt-out of is the actual consumption.
Of course, because that's, that's, that's law, that's law.
And, and we can't opt-out of the growing, although that would be regulated by our agricultural uses, right?
Right, and I think there's only a certain amount of plants that they're allowed to legally grow.
I don't know, I mean, again, I think
I'm almost biased about that somewhere.
I don't know if they worked through all those details.
Yeah, they haven't, that's, again, as Rob said, they kind of cut the cart before the horse, where we have not full, full details. And, and as you said, it's a board that's being set up and a committee, and none of those things have happened yet.
I believe people will be able to grow at home as well, right?
That's what we're talking about.
Right, okay. I thought you were talking more about someone who wants to grow it in, you know, on a property in a large quantity.
No, 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 this should be for their own consumption.
Gotcha.
Yeah, this should be for their own consumption.
Okay.
I think like in Vermont, you can have like, I believe it's two plants.
I think it's three per adult, a maximum of twelve per household.
Right, yeah. So there's guidelines there.
And if I recall, it's a pretty large amount that you can have as a personal possession? Is that right?
It's three ounce, I think it's three ounces now on your person, but you can have a good amount in your house. I don't know the exact number off here.
But again, anything the town board does is not going to affect anyone.
That's, that's all your domain.
Whatever it is, it is.
I'd like to make just one comment. It's funny, I'm, I'm a pharmacist my whole life, and I've been dispensing marijuana for decades, in a pill. THC is what it is, and it's a brand name, but doctors have to prescribe it, you know? And what it is, is a lifesaver for a lot of people who are on chemo, who really get nauseous and
Yes.
And it really helps. So, I mean, some people would really be helped by smoking it, because it goes instantly, and I'm not, I'm not pressing for, you know, this, but it's just instantly the smoke was in. If you take the pill, it takes thirty minutes, so you gotta time it with that, and the people really are sick.
Well, we've had medical marijuana for a while.
Yes.
And there's, there's a good amount of people that have medical marijuana cards that we, we encounter daily. But yes, no, I, I definitely see the benefits, but like I said, my concern is with, with the kids and being a gateway drug.
Yeah, well, there is a surge in nicotine, so is alcohol.
And again, I, I wanna get beat up that, you know, again, I'm talking from my experiences.
Everyone has, you know, you have your opinion, you just, you know, you were our dare guy forever, so
And, you know, I, when we, when we caught kids that were, you know, using and abusing drugs, I questioned them, and I talked to them, and I spent a lot of time with them, asking them how they started, how they ended up that way. Because if I don't know those answers, how can I help the next person, right? Or how can I tell the parents of signs to look for? You know, so I spent a lot of time with them, you know, when they were suffering, of how they got there, what they did, and spent a lot of my own time there with them. And again, that's my opinion, you know, against
That's why we love to have a heart for that community and the kids, we always have.
That's, that's what we are here for, you know, and that's, they are our future.
Sure.
You know, and, and not enough people focus on the children in the community, because it's work. It's not easy, not easy dealing with the kids and, and running around, you know, causing what looks like havoc to them, but there's a reason for it.
That's right.
Right, so let's figure it out, and let's, let's try to stop it, and help them be productive members of our, our community.
Well, thank you, Chief, as always. Pleasure to see you. Thank you for all you guys do.